I haven't heard anyone. I don't know. I haven't. Oh, you're going on. Do you know where our hair looks like?
The bar is generally coming. He's like.
And the other guy.
Okay.
Peter's. I. After that. So you know. Location. That's. It's usually. Actually, yeah.
Uh.
This will be us.
Either there are someone else here. You can pass all.
And choose. Couple of this.
Is it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you're continuing. It's not. It's not called.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you could just.
Mr. We have a live second, twenty five fourth, being the conversation will come to earth. Mr. Ross and Russ and Peach and I are in the room and Mr. Hagan is on the phone today. So we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, the business is the total of minutes and we have two sets of minutes I believe to approve, is that right?
Correct.
I don't have a chance to reveal them. I have a motion.
What?
Mr. Russ at the second, Mr. Beach. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Take.
Oh. Fast. The next item is the total of the order of agenda. I think we have a couple of things we're going to slip in.
Mr. Chair, the agenda today. With us. The fireworks permit. And we have that five E. And I'd like to add the sheriff. Add eight B.
Nice. That a motion?
It is a motion.
Second. Mr. Russ, this all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Fast. On that one, good one, all right, then. The consented agenda consists of bills. And paid employee status changes, overtime. And the May financial report. And would any wish for like anything full to review? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve and the consent so moved and sack it off? Mr. Russ at second. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At best. And we'll go to five E, which is the fireworks fireworks display. What's do is it orange? That orange in here? I thought you were going to be here to speak briefly was. He's out here a minute ago. Well. This form you you told us. Oh, you. Do you know what it's mentioned?
Well, no, missionary members of the. The board, I do not, but I I'm familiar with it, so. Uh, Nat is the manager of the Laramore Camp grown. Uh, traditionally, every year they do they do a fireworks display over the Fourth of July. Typically, he does reach out to the sheriff's office this year. I've not heard from him. I was notified by Mr. Alton Lord, I believe, uh, by phone call yesterday. Of the request for a public display. Uh, they do have a wide area that they typically do display them in and they have charged water lines. They keep a safe down off distance. We haven't had. Any issues. At all recently with their displays. Uh, I I have no concerns. I haven't seen the form, but if nothing has changed. I have no concerns with with approving it.
Under safety, so the sheriff ambulance and Laramore fire department will be present, so he can ask. It will be. Donald will be present.
Yeah, no, we'll we'll make sure that somebody's out out in the area. There sure seem pretty routine.
I'll I'll be out there with my Mustang. It's classic car day out there today. Clear more damage.
This place usually after your bedtime, but she got. I love it. But yeah, I I have no excuse about it. I'll make sure. Is it for the July July fourth? Is that the?
No, what?
Bad.
Saturday, this was six.
Yeah.
Okay. Rain day, that's good enough. It's not so severe. Okay. Well, I'm gonna make. Always with you. Okay.
All right, do I have most new proof? Mr. Beach. Second, second, Mr. Ross, all in favor of that patient, you about to say aye?
Aye.
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 So tell us you know, Mr. All right, um. And. We don't have any documents for the County Road five and US Highway two intersection. What are we? What are we going to do like that?
Are you gonna talk about that work?
Yeah, oh, aspects be added. Public or spend. Overwhelming, I guess. Somebody or everybody just wanting to get something done out there. Whatever the DOT needs to be necessary. I think what um. This body should do would be to basically. Look for something to request that the DOT kind of. Put a coast of the top of their pile of projects. And I can believe there is a DOT representative. Would you ever mind coming up to the podium and and kind of carrying the study results and what your guys thoughts are for us?
Yes. Good afternoon. Um.
What's your answer?
Uh, my name is Bobish. I'm the district engineer or the N D U of the Grand Forks here. I talked to Commissioner Ross yesterday morning. He asked if I would come in this afternoon just to. Brief you where the DOT is. Position is on on that intersection because most of you are probably familiar that. Intersections had multiple studies done on it over the past. Ten, twelve years and various alternatives have been brought forward and. Have um. Not been met with a consensus on what. Should be done with the intersection when they the last one. Was in two thousand seventeen, there was a safety review, committee meeting with the. DOT in the city and county and airport and. At that time, there was no consensus. Could be math, but there were some minor things that could be done with the intersection. Such as a dynamic. Speed message sign. Uh, relocating flashing vehicles closer to the intersection. Uh, installing some reflective panels and the signal heads. And doing some signal timing adjustment. And that was done in two thousand eighteen with a project. Since then, we've had some concrete overlays through that intersection and. The work was done as a normal intersection. Um, last summer during our interregional review, we discussed. The traffic signals starting to get to. To their end of life. So we asked our traffic operations if they could do. Another traffic operation study on that intersection, not wanting to just move forward replacing. Uh, a million and a half to two million dollars or signals without. Doing another traffic operation study, so traffic operations study was completed in February internally. With three alternates being proposed to move forward if we. Do look at doing something in the intersection and those alternatives were. Revised signals with some offset turn lanes, left turn lanes similar like fifty fifth. Or they're at an angle meeting each other. Roundabout or an arc. Um, so those are just three alternatives that were presented in that report. Now, since the accident in early June, uh. We did not have a project scheduled for that intersection, but. With the concerns that we've been hearing, we are looking to get a project set up. And then. We get it, get it on our schedule, get a consultant hired. And then go through the environmental process and public input process and. Determine the alternatives at that point in time, so. Um, and so now we're looking to get a project set up to look at that. Uh, intersection for different alternatives. But the DOT needs a support from the community to. Try and. Make it happen this time. We looked at it for over a decade now and have done. Little for changes and. I think it's time that we look at an alternative intersection there. Um, there are alternative intersections out there that. Will reduce fatalities and. And it's been proven that they will. So that that's what the DOT would be proposing is to to look at the alternative intersection to. A signalized intersection.
Are most of the collisions? Rearenders where people are not paying attention that the lights have changed or are they from the side?
It varies. Our fatalities have both been rear end crashes where. Uh, the incoming traffic hasn't slowed down and that's rear ended the traffic that's sitting at the intersection, so. Um, we have some. Near miss, you know, the T bone ones that. Are the fatal crashes and that's what some of these alternative. Intersections would get away from those type of accidents. They reduce conflict points. Now, there might be more property damage type accidents, but the. Personal injuries we feel would be reduced and as. Through. Projects throughout the nation to show us that it does reduce those.
Right, Robin. Would a would an overhead with on and off ramps work at that? Intersection? I mean, I I look at what's in Emmerito. You know, and it seems like I don't think there's a whole lot of accidents there. You know, it's just people going back and forth to the base, but those same people with are using highway two by the airport also coming off County Road five.
Yeah, that would be one of the alternatives that would more likely be presented, but I'm guessing that it would be. Uh, eliminated fairly quickly just due to the cost and traffic volume that's on highway two. I know it's been discussed in the past and and typically ends up. Paying off fairly quickly just because of the. Extremely high cost to build that. Uh, interchange.
Would that would that require federal DOT also involvement?
Yeah, yeah, it would have to, similar to ourselves, the Grant Forks change. It would have to go through that process too.
Well, I mean, it just seems to me that's the most logical thing to do. You know, I mean, people would be have right away on highway two. They wouldn't have to slow down for anything.
There there's some challenges there. There's a legal drain in that area, which. Throws a little bit more challenge to it.
Yeah.
Realistically, it comes down to the cost. Um, again, I'm not saying that that wouldn't be an alternative that could be presented and and see where. How far it goes, but.
Yeah, I mean, you you look at the forty one accidents in ten years. You know, that's a lot at that intersection, and I would venture to say there's not even been half that at Emmerito. At that overhead, so. Um, I just think. I mean, to me, that's the clear thing to do.
And then again, I think there's other alternatives that. Could do similar things for a lot less money. The roundabout is one that. Becoming a popular option, the. Our fast reduced conflict intersection is another one that Minnesota is. Doing a lot of throughout their interregional corridor highway two. So there's I think some other alternatives that are viable at much. Uh, less cost.
And 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 I'm sure you guys have done. Uh, traffic volume studies out there at that intersection to see.
Yeah.
How like how many cars are moving through there?
Yeah.
I would venture to say. Uh, morning on the way to the base, County Road five is a little busy. As is highway two.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Yeah, tell me. Five has about forty one hundred vehicles a day. And on on our September nineteen call, I think it was done. Was, excuse me. Approximately forty one hundred E D T and. Uh, highway two is approximately ten thousand. And then the airport is, I think, around twenty three hundred, you know.
Okay, Robin.
Sure, if. Say, I agree with Commissioner Ross that the the, in my opinion, the. Probably the preferred one would be the overpass. But if if the cost is. Like extremely high compared to the other alternatives, does that? Or are percent chance of actually getting anything done if that's the request? Is that?
No, no, okay.
Do you have any idea when the studying would be done?
Um, you know, all projects, they they. They take time. We didn't get a project set up and get a consultant hired. They would probably have the. Input meeting in maybe the next six months and alternatives decision document and the environmental document could take what? Up to a year, I mean. We can get going with something here soon, you know, soon as could be a two to three years out. Similar to. The merge of forty second, you got. Got the graph for that and. Uh, that wasn't announced last year roughly this time, maybe a later in July and. Uh, we don't expect that out. Uh, plans until twenty twenty five, so two years out, so for a tiny construction.
He said it was twenty seventeen, last time this really came up. Uh, I remember the meetings we had on that. One of the suggestions that I thought might work. Is the flashing lights, if you're if you're not paying attention, people can go by that and all of a sudden they're on the intersection. I was in the Twin Cities for twenty five years and those big. Green structures across the road and many, many different places are hard to miss. And is there something that could be done like that? Farther down the road so that people do. Don't just miss the flashing yellow light when they come through again. Uh, or is that too expensive too?
Well, that's it's not a method we've used at the DOT. It, you know, could be brought up at the public input meeting as a suggestion and then it could be. Uh, vetted and and looked into. I'm not familiar with that, that. I again, it's. Something he could propose. Or offer up as a as an alternative.
But you guys are the experts. I'm not suggesting that I don't.
Well, if you know about being, you know, used throughout Minnesota, I'm not familiar with any of it myself.
Mr. Russ. But earlier when you were speaking, you mentioned like consensus from the public and the people. My anecdotal evidence will tell you that is not going to be a problem to achieve. I have just got a text since you were talking. That Senator John Oldman wants to write a letter of recommendation to the DOT. So I made that announcement. Just now, you know, before the course of the last couple of weeks, it's been I've been inundated. And so the support is there, definitely the community support is there, so I wouldn't worry about that piece of it.
Well, as far as letters of recommendation and and letters of support that at this point in time. They they can be sent, but we we don't need anything to encourage us to. To get a project scheduled and to move forward with a project. It has been something again that. We've looked at for ten, twelve, fourteen years. It's been a long time with many studies, so. It's good to have letters of support and and that's what. We will need in order to. Get something changed then.
Okay. How if you you have any meetings in Bismarck? With the the head of DOT or whatever. I think there'd be a number of us would would go and and talk about that. I spent forty some years in law enforcement. Forty of it here in Grant Forks. And I've taken, I've been out on a number of those fatalities out there at intersection, so. To me, the clear cut, clear cut. Route is the overpass with on and off ramps. Clearly. I don't see that any different than what's going on in Emmerito.
That one was probably solved under different.
Yeah. Probably.
Terms to.
You know, sure of the base that probably had twenty five thousand people at the time.
Yeah.
So.
I I'm sure that the director is is. Has been briefed on the the happenings and the concerns of other communities. My understanding may have even had conversations with the lieutenant governor, so he is. Aware of communities' concerns as is the newspaper.
Mr. Hagan, he's on, he's on the bill behind you. Any questions? No, anybody else?
Nope.
I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Good luck finding a. Perfect solution.
Yes, yes, again, just continue to support it and hopefully we'll have success. Thank you.
Mr. West.
That test is. Good afternoon. Um, before I forget. On this Nelson was the. Letter supporter for the city of Grand Forks with an E D A. Did that get added somewhere? It is, okay.
Well.
I'm not in the days then.
We had a a late request from the city of Grand Forks.
Limits or wait?
No, to support the city of Grand Forks applying for a grant for the energy project. They're not asking for a commitment from the county, just. Supporting the application.
See that. You got something for us to look at?
I do. I got, oh, I got one copy with me, but.
Why don't you read it or summarize it?
Um. Absolutely, thank you. It's for an E D A disaster relief funding. For the community energy application support, bigger business. The economic engine, well, it just describes. Agriculture being important to the community. It talks about the facility, hidden the energy facility, what its capabilities of, you know, trying to process hundred twenty thousand bushel. A day in and what that impact would be for our region. Where are the projects located? What they're looking to use the funds for be, um, there's like thirty seven million is for infrastructure for potable water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation. Transportation alone is estimated to be seventeen million. And they're gonna apply for and. E D A disaster relief fund grant and they're just looking for the county to support that.
The city?
City of Grand Forks. And so we were hoping. Uh, I need a chairman of the board to sign us for a letter.
But we love to follow up more in detail with the letter or do you understand what's going on?
Yeah.
Do I have any questions for? Mr. West or the motions you want to make?
Make a motion to accept it.
See, we do have a rec, recider of city of Grand Forks here as well, too.
From where?
City of Grand Forks Engineering Department.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. To add our. Request for approval to that motion for the city. Uh, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Kimberly actually her soon was kind of acting up, so. I think she's having a hard time unbeauty herself, but.
Sure, it's. Well, just kidding, almost there. Oh, I'm moving again. Okay, no, it was when you were asking about any questions, I apologize. There was a black screen. I didn't know, you know, hopefully I send a hand gesture to show you, but. Sorry about that.
I thought you were exercising.
Maybe.
So we need, does he need to wait for anything else?
I just didn't know if she would have a question or not. I wanted to make sure she got a question answered and answered, but.
Oh, I do.
Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll take care of that.
Okay.
And move on to the bids, huh?
Yeah, so Northwood Shed is kind of creeping slowly forward here. We have two issues to work through. The biggest one is we opened this. On Wednesday. And maybe you can see you see the results in front of you. We had two. Uh, two digits recently. I think both contractors would be okay. However, the low bid from old construction did not have his. Contractors license in the bid bond envelope he had it would be. A bid that sells. So. And it wasn't realized until after we had opened it. And after. The the two contractors were in the room, we opened the bids, they left. And as I told. Contract was for the contractor's license was in the wrong envelope, so. Uh, you can see on the bottom, usually I have. Requested motion because things tend to be a little more straightforward. However, this one. Is definitely a gray area. This one, Sid and I have. Plenty discussions about. What we think should happen or where a recommendation would be and we couldn't come to a great conclusion, so. Uh, we have a few options for the board to consider, otherwise, you know. Certainly welcome any recommendations. Maybe one option would be reject all bids and rebid it. Um, this would delay the project at least a month. And the little bit guy already told me he would raise his price, so. Side of the point, the another option would be just reject the old bin, give it to Forks Laugh and Pass, Forks Laugh and Plaster. They did everything right. They, you know, they have their their contract license correct. The unfortunate side of things is it raises the price of the project sixty five thousand eight hundred dollars, so. Yeah, that's a that's a little bit of a concern for me, but we are appropriately budgeted and we could cover it. Another option is waive the technicality. If you would even follow the technicality, might be more than that. Of license not being in the right envelope and give the project the whole construction.
I move with waive the technicality, save sixty five grand and not worry about what envelope it went in.
Do a second. You have to wait for a second. I've got a question to the state's attorney as we go forward.
Yeah, I'll I'll second it, but I think. State's attorney, Bobstead, wants to say something.
She has a question.
Oh, your thoughts? The thing is, we we reject bids now and then, really technical issues. So we have to be careful if we're gonna do this one. Uh, what about the next one that comes up? And I can't stand the idea that it costs us sixty five thousand more though. So. I don't know if there's a way to get it done enough, just want to answer.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this this is a very difficult decision for the board in the respect that. Uh, the statute is quite clear in this situation in that it's it clearly states the license is to be in the outer envelope. With the bid bond, so that's to be opened prior to the bid itself being open because that's in a separate envelope. Uh, the statute is pretty direct in that it states that a bid submitted without this information in the proper envelope. May not be read or considered and must be immediately returned to the bidder. So, um, I think it's a judgment call for the board. If. We award the bid to the lowest bidder, there is that potential that the other entity may. File suit against the county and and potentially their liability. With that said, it it obviously is the lowest bid, so. Think that's something for the board to weigh. If you want to risk that potential for the lower price or we go with the safe bets and have less liability or no liability if. Go with the higher.
Okay, what are the thoughts?
I had a quick question. Has the other company, the Forks Plaster Company, have they done work for us in the past, Nick?
Not for the highway department, not that I'm aware of. No. They've been in the area and the region for. Long, long time. They had, they had references. I I didn't call the references, but they provided the references as requested in the bid proposal.
Okay.
It's my. It's my belief it would be okay to do the project.
That they would be okay to do the project? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're a reputable firm. So.
Just they're more expensive, so my motion stands.
I have one more question, sorry, for Miss Longstead is what could what be? The action, they obviously they could sue us or something, like what would be? Would it be a fine? Would it? What would they be able to come after the county for basically?
Commissioners, oops, Commissioner Hagan, members of the board, um. In these six situations, it would be damages that they would be seeking, um so if if the. The hu- uh higher bidder wasn't awarded and the court determined that they should. Have been awarded the project instead of uh the the bidder that wasn't in compliance. Uh the court potentially would look at what type of damages to their fur. Because they were not selected for the project.
Okay.
That'd be essentially the profit say generally wouldn't present as profits based on the total cost. That they would normally have been able to obtain.
Yeah.
Can I ask an oddball question? Why on earth does it matter what envelope that they put the? Business license and. Versus their bid. I mean, to me, that seems so arbitrary. It's almost beyond ridiculous.
Uh Commissioner Rusted, members of the board. That's probably a better question for the legislature in that they um. Clearly stated this in two sections of the century code. Uh I haven't looked into the legislative history, but I presume that they want to ensure that all bidders are. Uh legitimately licensed contractors in the state of North Dakota uh before their bid is considered.
Yeah, yes. And we we have tossed out bids in the past, but as I don't read all specifics, but I know there were. Pretty technical issues in some bids along the way and.
In my ten years, I keep throwing out bids because of bid bond. Bid bond issues. I don't know if we've had licenses, not that 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 has degraded this issue. Um and part of the reason, you know, I didn't catch it is because in the pure highway code. It doesn't require the license. With the bid bond except in different parts of century code that I'm not familiar with. So we've opened up pure highway like Bridge and Culver projects. Without the license with the bid bond and accepted them before. But this could be would be considered a different part of central code. Applicable with public buildings and vertical construction. And there's a part of just contractors, I believe, Greg's were just kind of general contractors that. So a lesson learned, I think, moving forward on our pure highway jobs. We need to change our language in our proposal that that license has to be in there. I learned something here too.
Any further questions, comments? Different options?
I mean, to me, it seems so preposterous that it would go after us or something like that, one at sixty five thousand dollars difference. Eh uh I. I just said, I know we're so ridiculous that that would be in century code, so I'm obviously in favor of taking a little bit.
Well, yeah, in my I I look at it as. One of the things we always, I hate to even say it, we just have to be consistent. If we let this one go by, it's. All the other little things that we have said in the past. It's this is the board that that determined, but I'm not sure I can support.
I should also add. Would if if there is a company chosen today, the board picks one. Um. I would ask that it's a contingent approval. So I still do not have in writing from A D M.
Yeah.
The ability to buy this land. I have spoken to them numerous times and been assured that everybody at A D M that. Needs to be involved is okay with it. And we just sent them a purchase agreement. We didn't want a purchase agreement before, but kind of insisted, but we need I need something in writing. That says it's okay before we get a contractor moving. Even if we don't close for a while, at least we have that in paper and it says, you know, it's coming. So they assure me it's coming soon.
And what's the year? It's a very small price, what was it?
Four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, so they're holding up the project for that because showing that that yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm told the challenge is in their asset management group where this is a worldwide corporation. That this land was purchased under a previous company or two previous companies. It's been replatted and divided and. Was only maybe twelve years ago, the county got us our current lot, we do have.
Yeah.
Divided off, et cetera, and they're having problems tracking the asset. That's the holdup, not the fact that we're buying it. So yeah, I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks, we have that. So all right.
I had one more quick question, Dave, if that's okay. I or this is for Nick, um. Any thoughts or ideas how much the bid price would be raised if we rejected them? I know you said that they're gonna raise their prices. I'm sure they weren't like very specific, but. Would it be would it be less than sixty five thousand dollars? Like it would maybe go up ten thousand, not that I want it to go up at all, but.
He knows. Well, I he didn't give. If I had to shoot from the hip, I'd say twenty grand. Cause his worry is, he knows he can go up and still have the job. But the second bidder might lower his price a little bit. They might kind of meet in the middle somewhere.
Right. Yeah, it's a tough it's a tough call between being a good steward of the money that we have and making sure we don't set a precedent for this to happen again and. Here we are, so, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
And in that regard, what's a justification for we bid? If there is someone who has method requirements, if both of them screwed up, sure, always regit. If only one screws up, what's the justification of rebidding it rather than simply?
Well, I can one of the. Well, you could, you just reject all the bids.
It it is in the proposal, the board has a right to reject any and all bids for just for any reasoning wants. But yeah, you're.
It's like my bid because someone else screwed up.
I mean, the sound would be as you rebid it and you still get the, you know, the price, just to be very great.
But it would delay your project by how long?
Well, guaranteed a month.
Hmm.
After advertise at least twenty one days, that statue. See, that's different for vertical construction, highway is fifteen days, but vertical construction, it's at least twenty one days. Plus you got a few days in there in the next board meeting, so we're looking at the August meeting.
I can't believe we're on this discussion over an envelope. She mad at the legislature, right, though? Preposterous.
It is. I agree. All right, uh are we ready to vote? Yeah, I suppose we will call vote on this one.
Yeah.
Uh Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Commissioner Rusted?
Yes.
Commissioner Peach?
No.
Commissioner Hagan?
Yes.
And I'm on the, but it's passed. So that's what we do. See how it goes.
Would that also include signing a contract when we have a purchase order in place? We do a separate motion on that or?
No, I. Well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I I don't feel right signing anything until we have. That purchase order or some documentation that.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, thank you. Um the next item for consideration is speed limits on our county roads. So we have right now, there's the 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 second sheet, there's a list of. Uh mostly paved roads in the county that have speed limits, any just trucks. And it's my understanding on most of these, I don't have background or knowledge of all of these segments, but. Some of them I do where. As road have deteriorated over time, one way to preserve them and make them last longer is to slow truck traffic down. And all these paved roads on the segment have been overlaid, well, at least in the last ten years. With county five and six being overlaid this year, it kind of sparked something in my head. I was like, well, wait a minute. Why don't we let these trucks move? The roads are related, just let them go. So that's what really was the impetus of all this, even though say county road ten, we'll relate that literally ten years ago. But I think it would fall into the same category of being in in good shape and um. Our request would be is to eliminate truck speed limits. And then also on color twenty five after it's paved. To pump that up to fifty five as any other paper on the county with no truck limit on it. Currently, right now, that has. All trucks at thirty five. The little tidbit I'd like to add is the ones that have a loaded truck limit. Versus just a truck limit. But you know, that's that's hard to. I I did visit with Sheriff Snyder, I'm gonna name drop him here, but he was in favor of this and um. You know, it's look, it's challenging for enforcement to know. Well, is this road got the limit or not? And is the truck loaded or not? Oh, I mean, that's kind of a minor thing. Another minor thing is differential speeds. And I noticed it on my daily commute, it's all going on coming five. Trucks are supposed to be going forty five and they're going, you know, a lot of them do go forty five. I'm trying to go fifty five and. Then you try to, I'm gonna go around this guy, and so you are unnecessarily causing passing maneuvers that. I think now are not necessary. And then sometimes, I guess, I personally have this problem, but sometimes you'll see people get a little aggressive. We haven't had a problem to my knowledge of accidents or crashes that way, but. Potential fifty four.
So you put little limits on the spring though, right?
Well, that's gonna be a different topic, Commissioner Ross.
Okay.
Yes, so there are. That was gonna maybe come in August.
Yeah.
With a whole spring little limit revamp I'm working on to match up with the D O T. And use their language, cause ours is the old D O T way, which is. I don't even know how outdated it is. So, you know, truck is confusing the trucking company. I'd like to have our um our low limit is the same as the D O T is, so trucks can. Match.
So do you do tonnage or what do you do?
Well, we do tonnage.
So what what by time on our county road?
Oh, it varies. So there's two. We have our class A, which would be called an eight ton or eighty thousand pound rolls. And we have our class two, which is six ton per axle, sixty thousand pound rolls. And it depends on the road. And in a nutshell, the way it generally works and a good way to describe it for this conversation would be the class A limit to higher limit. Feeds our grain elevators. So every major agricultural hub has a class A limit. The rest are. Class two.
Okay.
Motor limit.
Okay.
But some of those, sometimes we put on just a spring ton limit, truck speed limit. That needs to be reviewed as well too.
Okay.
It's just old now data.
All right, anyway, I would make a motion and we take the uh the forty five mile an hour speed limit off. Um the time roads uh for trucks and move it to fifty five.
I'll second.
Also by Mister Ross, I'll second by Mister Rusted. Uh one quick question, that somebody the gravel road, you've you've been talking about how good the pavement is, but how about the gravel road? They're okay still?
Well, we have two gravel roads.
Yes.
Okay, so one is hundred twenty five, which we. And stuff, we're gonna be paving that and um we can discuss that later. The other one is county road fourteen, so I go from Honeyford West. And that was five, six years ago, we specifically put a truck speed limit on that one. And that was to discourage. Well, what was happening is a bunch of trucks primarily from Canada were coming down state eighteen. Southbound on eighteen, turning eastbound on fourteen, going to the Honeyford elevator. Well. Say, well, you got county road one, they could go east on, you got county thirty three, you'll be paid, you could go east on. Could go down to U S two, there's other way, other options to get there. And so I I've left that one alone for now.
Short stretch a lot, isn't it?
Six, seven miles. Thank you. Tried to shoot from the hip and say it's seven. My memory certainly right. Have you got the map, Tony? Yeah.
All right, any other questions? In favor of the motion, say goodbye by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both.
It's seven miles, the um. The hey, thank, not that I have a memory, but um. With the main consideration to looking at county road twenty five. To once it's paved or should I, once it's paved, the pump the speed limit up or should I come back later after it's paid with that request?
I thought we were including it. I thought I said it was part of the motion that once it is paid, that we go up to fifty five.
Okay.
That's the way I understood it.
Okay, I do too, so I think that now that you're okay with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, that is all that I have.
All right.
And break a soft ring, we can get some done.
All right. And. Sure, I guess sure of the day.
Chairman, members of the commission. Uh I am going to try to speak for Mister Ford, who was unable to attend today. I didn't have enough time to put a suit on, but I'll do my best, so. Uh I come today to talk to you about what we've been working on, uh the uh. The board that's been assigned to work on R F P for a new sheriff's location. Which, if you recall, that does involve multiple aspects. It's potentially leasing uh a. New build or a remodeled uh existing facility. Or the other option was a our partial demo remodel of the existing old jail. That is connected to the uh county courthouse. Uh that option had uh two options included, so option two had two options. Option A was the remodel. And redesign and option B for that was a demo. And uh in our group, we've been having discussions, uh we've been working on R F Ps, we have some rough, rough graphs. The first one that I'm going to attempt to uh cover with the assistance of State's Attorney Longstead. Is the is the uh old jail project. And what we've been talking about in our discussion amongst ourselves. Is that uh right now the commission is looking, asked us to explore the two options. Redesign, remodel, or a demo uh with. A- as we some of us are familiar with, we have to work with the fire panel, so juvenile detention will be out. And part of that was looking for qualifications for architectural or engineering firms to get a cost. Uh what our discussions have surrounded uh the topic of of the financial portion of that is. The commission has received two separate cost estimates. Uh option A for the redesign refurbishment and remodel. You receive two cost estimates, uh one on the low end was three point eight billion, up to ten million. That was from. Community contractors and J L G architects. And the community contractor estimate did not include. Uh professional design, uh site improvements, technology or furniture fixtures and equipment costs. So their loan was three point eight excluding those four. Uh I think that uh fair market value, you're looking at probably a low option. Being on the high end of five million dollars, five to ten. Just guess. So uh the other option that we have. Received some information on from contractors as well was option B demolition. Uh the one thing that could put an asterisk on that is that did not include. The uh improvements to the fire panel. Because of the monitoring needed and the upgrades, that was not included in the initial demo requests. And that range was estimated between seven hundred and fifty thousand and a million dollars for a demo. And if I believe, I'm recalling correctly, it's like rich and to dirt surface, not uh carpeting or anything. So uh if if I'm missing anything, Miss Longstead, please inject here, but I think the the uh. Discussion that we have is, you know, with these, with the range. The price range that we currently have. Uh we think that we're gonna have a better response from companies. Uh engineers, architects, or or construction firms, if. Uh engineers, architects, or or construction firms, if we only put out one of those options. And and knowing knowing the price range. Is there, is there an option that the commission would prefer us? To explore the redesign, refurbishment, remodel? Or the demolition of the correctional center? Keeping in mind that we still plan on submitting an RFP. For a lease with the option to either extend, option to buy, or option to terminate the lease for for a lease facility. Miss Wong said I kind of covered it.
Sheriff Schneider, members of the board, I think Sheriff Schneider did a good job kind of encapsulating the discussion that that has occurred. Amongst this committee, the only thing I could add is that um I think part of the discussion was maybe. In relation to the old jail to to request a cost estimate for. Each option A and option B, um because it was such a wide range, three million to ten million is kind of hard to budget for. As we've worked through. Our drafts on these proposals, the suggestion was made, maybe we should skip the. Cost estimate phase and just request a proposal for an engineer or architect to um. Submit funds and specs for one, one or both of those options. And so I think kind of the idea was to get the thoughts from the board to see. If we're comfortable with those cost estimates. Would you like us to narrow in on? Only option A or option B or bid out architect and engineering services or either or?
What's anybody?
It it's a lot, we understand it's a lot to digest, that's why we've. We're in a very, very breeding phase of putting these RFPs together, because it's. It's a complex problem, you know, I've been uh searching the web for the last two weeks, week and a half. Uh looking for RFPs for police facilities remodels. And there's quite a few out there. And they're very detailed, I I have yet to come across one that has three options. Uh usually it's a, I I've seen most of them are are new built where they're providing the land, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, that could be. On on the jail option, if that was a demo, you own the land, you could. Get into the details of building something, you want that in that location. Uh so it's it's usually a remodel or or they own the land and they want somebody to construct it. Uh leasing RFPs are are very hard to come across. Maybe I'm not looking in the right places, give you some guidance, uh if anybody's aware where they could be located a little easier. But this would be a very complex RFP that was put out, uh even if it was two. So es- especially the June one, I mean.
The question that I have on the jail is. Because of the fire panel and the. Heating system and all of that. We can't just tear the whole place down anyway, right? There'd be a partial demo and. And then rebuild from there.
That's basic.
Why would that make more sense than than remodeling, I guess?
I I can't help that. Uh but I do know that, you know, the jail is basically in L shape, we'll say the shore L is what connects the hallway to the main courthouse.
Right.
In that shore L is what we need to keep. That's that's where all the boilers and all that stuff is.
Mechanical.
Make all the mechanical, so. The fire panel and and the fire uh notification system all needs an upgrade. It was apparently uh when it was. When it got its upgrade, I believe in juvenile detention went in. A monitoring panel was located in juvenile detention, because they're staffed twenty-four seven. That is going to be non-existent, hopefully in around a year or a year plus, when juvenile detention moves out. So they're going to facility connected to the uh correctional center. And so we need to upgrade that panel, uh Mister Greshes, you had buildings and grounds indicated that that panel is not capable of. Uh having remote notifications, so it needs a significant upgrade. So. Uh that that portion will need to get addressed either either way.
What's your, what one of you guys, the on the committee? What have you seen with respect to potential lease? Close to the, close to downtown, the edge of town. Uh. Ballpark. What's you say?
Yeah, there was, uh the ones that I guess come to the top of my my head are, one was in the Grand City Mall, uh the Dollar General. Uh area. That was proposed. Uh there's a location at the intersection of Demers and Interstate twenty-nine. There is a proposed location at the intersection, just off the intersection of uh Thirty-Seventh Avenue and I twenty-nine. And uh community contractors came back with. Uh multiple locations uh to be determined, uh they did not indicate the location of those, so. That is something that we're looking to hone in on the RFP for the lease. That you must disclose the actual location of the property.
Any suggestions for the committee to follow up on?
Specifically for the jail portion, right, and also for address.
I just, I just think that. It needs to be talked about a little more. With the committee. Uh to maybe have an R RFP ready for a commission meeting down down the road. But the committee needs to decide. Which which plan they want to do. You know, I mean. I think that's the only way we can look at this right now.
So it's sort of Commissioner Ross's point, uh and and Commissioner Ross's is on the committee. Correct?
Yep.
Uh so. We we are willing and able to do. The option A and option B for the jail. But the committee feels that. That's gonna water down. Potential contractors submitting this. Which is fine, it's up for discussion. If our hopes were today, if we come to the commission and. And you decide, you know, three point eight, ten million dollar range. Uh is. Is doable for us to explore, just cut right to the chase and put out an RFP. For the remodel. Then then we could do, we could do that option and just eliminate the bulldozing. But if the if the commission overall says, you know what, one million dollars for. High end of demo and keeping. The uh the portion that we need attached is more in our range. We have a vacant building that's been vacant for uh eighteen years. Uh nearly eighteen years somewhere around there, uh we can let it stand another two, three years before we demo it. And a million dollars we can bite off on that when we're ready to start demoing. We we just wanted to see the the direction that you wanted to go with. If you're not sure, you would rather us put out an RFP for architect or engineer. To again go in and give a price of uh cost estimate, we're happy to try it out.
And also you got any thoughts on how we. How these different approaches look from financing?
So I think we're gonna have to use our remaining one point seven. Eight mils. That we have in our capital product level. It's only option, and that we have. And that would generate al- almost nine million dollars.
That's all.
I. I just think the committee. And we should just get get back together and we should just decide on a plan A or plan B. Which one we want to submit to the to the full board and. I I know it's been hard to get everybody together, you know, uh at a common place to do this, but. And then and then if we can have it ready for. I don't know, uh commission meeting and. I don't know if we can have it in two weeks. But maybe uh the first meeting in August.
Uh Commissioner Ross, we we should could try, we got a decent jumpstart on on the RFPs. So I think we could get a uh close to final draft. To the to the board to consider, uh look look for recommendations or any changes on that. Uh i- if the committee is able to meet prior to and see what what length we want to go. And I think that's on most of us, the interview folks.
And then what's on the dark balance on?
I don't, I don't know that two weeks is enough time, I don't know what you think. Maybe, you know, the first meeting in August.
Um yeah, I'm sure, maybe maybe the the appointed committee, we can just. Throw in an email.
Yeah.
See what what dates might work.
Yeah.
If if people are available.
I I think if we have one more meeting, we should be able to come together on some proceedings, so.
Okay.
That makes, that makes. That's more switches. Alright, the next uh the the next proposal, you're not getting off easy at all today, uh Nick West started the off on a good start. And I'm gonna continue, uh the next is the, I'm I'm working on an RFP for. Uh the lease and keep in mind, this is very, very general, but I just wanted to give you a working document, it's somewhere near set out a final. Uh draft even format, it's ideas on paper. And I will provide a digital copy to Commissioner Haggins as well. Uh but what we've been doing is, we've been trying to assemble. Some of the, there's some money here, uh some of the requests. Uh that that we're looking for in a facility onto a sheet of paper. With this, we came up with a few uh questions that we do need some direction. From the commission on, uh today would be great. And it's it's regarding uh some things that we want to include in here, so something that that the the group that's made is talked about. Is length of lease. And. And we should really, we just, we were talking that we should probably have. A length of lease request in the RFP for a lease of a facility. Uh. You know, Commissioner Ross that has a lot of knowledge on on leases and and a lot of you are familiar with leases. So I guess the question is, uh what we brought up is maybe there's two lengths of lease submitted. I don't know what a a lease rate would be on a on a five-year lease, especially if somebody asks to put in law enforcement specific. Items into a facility, like an armory, evidence, special air exchange units, uh. Different different things along those lines, I don't know if a five-year lease would be appealing. Uh maybe a ten-year would, maybe a twenty-five year would, how long are you willing to go? So I, one of the requests from that I'd like to get clear clarification off of the board today is. What length of lease would you recommend we post in an RFP?
So the developer would have a. They'd have to have quite a high late lease rate if they're gonna think that you're being, might bail out five years.
That that's that's my my presumption and and you know, that being said, uh in the same breath, Chairman England. I I just. Can't imagine a developer would even lease us for five years if they didn't think we were gonna redo again. Right, I I don't think they would waste the time or the money.
I agree.
Putting up, putting us in a facility if we weren't gonna re re up the lease after five years.
And what what did you talk about with respect to the option to purchase? Would it have to be after a certain amount? Lease years, we're gonna, would that option to purchase be exercisable after seven years or nine years or something? Have you talked about?
Commissioner Ross is nodding his head and I'll I'll defer to him, but I I think, you know, we we can absolutely disclose that in here at. At the end of a five-year, ten-year lease, uh option for the county to either buy or terminate.
Yeah, yeah, the terms are usually pretty negotiable in these type of situations, considering they're. The. Building might be built as soon. They probably think, probably err off the side of a. Longer request than usual, but I mean, I can tell you how I've structured it in the past. I'll put together a cost for years one to five. A cost for years five to ten, a cost for years ten to fifteen, and then at each one of those. The either party has the right to terminate for no cause or just sign the paper and the and the. And the terms change, so you can put language in at least that stated. You can re-up after years, whatever, in any year, you know, year five, you could re-up for. X amount of dollars for a square foot. Or you can buy it at whatever the fair market value is at that time, or to do a raise or whatever. Probably have something in that uh. The lease agreement that would say that. You know, the county would probably be out there to pay for the abrazier. And closing costs would be my hunch. Uh because the the risk. Lot of risk is lying with. The the owner, the owner at this point. That's, I guess that's my two cents, I mean, I think it's all negotiable, you know.
It strikes me though that we would want to be. Clear that we could stay ten years if we wanted to. I didn't see the landlord because I would have to five and start over.
Well, that's where kind of the negotiation piece comes in, like, you know, you know, I I uh. Well, I'll think about it from the landlord's standpoint, although I can build sheriff's department, get out sheriff's department. You know, so I mean, basically. That piece of lease is just. For good measure. Yeah, that's what you gotta do, rent it out to some other sheriff's department.
Yeah. So I have a question, if. If you uh. You go a longer lease, is the lease cheaper?
Usually. Yeah, I mean, if you cut it up in two or three years instead of five, it's usually gonna be more expensive.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, that depends on.
If they build it, right, there's no reason you couldn't stay there for ten years, more than likely, isn't it?
And financially, it might be better for us, right?
Well, uh you're Chairman England, members of the commission, uh as stated in in this RFP, like and and in our TV, like. I don't want to build a sheriff's office for me, I want to build it for the next three, four, five sheriffs, it should last fifty years down the road.
Yeah.
Uh that's and that's, I did later that only, we we're we're looking for a structure that is has the integrity. That is presumed to last fifty years, I mean, fires, tornadoes, things you can't.
You're like a gold car for fifty years, you know.
Oh, he probably, he's, we got it young enough, so he probably.
My last name is not Ross. You're forty. No, I I don't want to be here that long, but I don't want to leave uh somebody with something that doesn't work either, so. So so I'm I'm hoping for, you know, and and maybe, you know, the direction that Commissioner Ross had said, one, five, five to ten, ten, fifteen year lease costs. Uh that that sounds valid, but me, I don't know what what the board is thinking, but that's easy to.
Well, I just think too, if we go, we go along release, like for ten years, financially. For the county, it would be better. I mean, we wouldn't have a lot of, a lot of cash outlay right away, so.
Yeah.
Turn to, I just think it gets to. When we could get to the point where someone answers the RFP. To see what that lease, annual lease cost would be at least. Ten-year term, five, ten, whatever, probably you could put out there.
You know, I think you'd probably expect. Between twenty and thirty dollars per foot.
And what is that, if we do? I mean, square feet?
Well, I would just guess on the one, ten thousand.
Go at least ten thousand, I think you said.
Uh two hundred to three hundred thousand. In that person, right?
I don't like to do math, but I can calculate.
So could you put in, give a surprise for ten year lease and. Would you wanna go more than ten or just what you want and?
That's what I'm asking the board.
I know, but what?
So the R and D.
I I think.
You put in the price and say fifteen, what is it for ten, what would it be for fifteen?
Right, and a couple of the options that were proposed to us, you know, there was a building that was option that was proposed and I don't remember if it included software machines or not, but. There was one for three million, one for around five million, when we look at that over twenty years. Uh five million dollars. I mean, you're really stretching that out, like I would, I would think that after. A few years, maybe five, ten years of the county. Paying that. Uh again, I don't know where the developer would end up being and what the agreements would be, but we want, we want to find that out, because I put in a. I'm working on building a checklist for them to provide information. And uh if they provide us some of that information, it'll be easier for the commission to make that decision. So that's another thing, is I have a request for proposal. Uh. Uh worksheet that's included in here that is again. Very rough and green. But still working on it, but what what our goal is, is there will be a scoring template. When RFPs are are received on this. And the more information they're willing and able to provide, the more we can. Base our, the commission can base their decision off of.
Yeah.
So if they refuse to include uh the total cost of their lease per month over a five-year timeframe. If it's a range of uh, you know, ten to thirty thousand dollars a month. Well, that really doesn't help us, they're not gonna gain many points uh in our in our scoring matrix on that. So we are trying to hone in on some of that, and part of that that we do want to hone in on is lease term, uh length of lease terms. So we are trying to hone in on some of that and part of that that we do wanna hone in on is lease term, uh, length of lease terms. I don't.
Yeah. You also have an option to renew for additional term, I should.
Yeah.
So I mean, even a five year lease, there's some protection, we've got an option to renew. But a ten year lease is probably cheaper and. You're not gonna wanna move very likely in the first ten years anyway. I think ten years seems to make sense.
Yeah, and and I I honestly don't. I could be completely wrong. The sheriff's office has basically been mobile almost for. Twenty years in temporary locations, right? Uh, but I don't. Perceive a move at the end of five or ten, which I mean, third, i- i- in ten years, it'll be an entire commission with term limits that you guys have. Uh, I can't imagine they're gonna wanna build a facility. Our our property tax is going up that much, or now the bills are increasing, and we have millions of dollars to play with. So I, the the part that's negotiable to me that I've been. Why I'm standing here in front of you today, talking too long, is what what? Does the commission feel would potentially be more palatable? Should we look at a five year and a ten year term? Should we look at a five year and a fifteen year term or or ten and twenty? What numbers should we put on this worksheet?
I think we just start with ten to fif- and ten or fifteen, uh, five years of.
Yeah, two.
Five years is just a year longer than our our terms on the board. I mean, that's just going like this. So I would still get placed if they're gonna be in it, you know, you're gonna want to stay five.
I would say ten and and fifteen, yeah.
Granted, there's interest in recruiting one now, but if you look ten years, take the high end, high end thirty bucks per foot, low end of square footage, three hundred thousand dollars, that's three million dollars. Not including the interest in that, right?
Right.
Uh, so if if it does end up being about a five million dollar building, I don't want the cost purchase to be at that end, but. Uh, maybe it would be affordable.
In ten years, it would be, because we would have a lot of bonds dropping off, wouldn't we? Yeah.
Not too easy to be true, but.
Okay, so if, and I, this doesn't, I'm assuming just put in a ten and a fifteen year, uh, lease term was, okay? Uh, if there is any ideas on what we could include in a worksheet document for them to to respond to. Uh, we don't have any purpose on here, none of the legals on here either, uh, so this is just working on the body, not the location, but. There's any ideas, I'm not looking for them now. That's why I provided you all with the working documents. I'm available available by phone, email, and make sure to pass it on to the committee as well. That's working on the RFP, but if you do come up with any ideas. That should be included that you think are are very critical, please reach out to me and we will, we will include those. Uh. I believe that's, let me check and know here, I believe that's all that I have on on that one. Uh. Uh, there was a note, uh, regarding, talk about the timeline. We did have a quick conversation regarding the timeline and we will request that in the RFP for the lease. And, uh, when we get to that point for the options for the jail. But rough guess timelines, uh, Mr. Gerschewski provided some estimates. I was thinking if it was a. Uh, retrofit, subtle demo retrofit to the jail. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, it's somewhere on twenty twenty seven. He was, he was believing two, two and a half years, somewhere around there. After going through the bids, the demo, new construction, uh, somewhere around that timeframe, the lease with the option to buy it depends on if the developer. Is currently developing, if they would eat our land. Or if they have dirt that they're just waiting, or if they would purchase, purchase something, so that timeframe is. Very unpredictable and that's what we're requesting out of you. But we could be looking at anywhere from. I would say short term, a year to to two and a half years on projects. A demo and remodel or a demo when you build on that property would. Be the longest.
Okay.
So.
What you're saying is better be remaining friends with our folks over at the city. And they'll kick you out one day.
Good idea.
They won't.
Good idea.
They've been very, very, uh. Good to work with about on this whole thing, so. I'm sure they appreciate that we're trying to get somewhere.
Uh, that, Ms. Wong said, did you have any other input on on that? Okay, any other questions regarding where we're at in the RFPs?
Please, yeah, and if there anything else that, uh, you have from, uh, which report or what you're referring to?
No, I mean.
Okay. Get down the spot.
Thank you. I'm going on to, uh, uh, and the added part of the agenda B. Which was, uh, I come before the commission today looking for approval to purchase, uh, two snowmobiles. I know it's July. Uh, don't panic, uh, we have two seasons here, right? Flood season and winter, so we're currently in flood season, winter's coming soon. But I've been trying to explore for the last few years, uh, procuring a couple of snowmobiles for winter response. We, the county hasn't had sufficient winter responding since we sold the SUSTS, which was over a decade ago. Uh, what we've been relying on is our airboats. To respond if if the winter conditions, uh, have enough, well, they're most capable anywhere, but. Timeframe over response, that is, that is, uh, it it's not great, but they they do work. So we've been looking for bids, uh, we were able to come up, we looked at one, two, three, six places for bids. Uh, recently for snowmobiles, Devils Lake Marine came in with a little bid. Uh, part of their conditions where they would be holdovers from twenty twenty three, we had notes from last year. And, uh, they came in with, they said that, uh, we can utilize the government incentives and rebates. Uh, if we were willing to purchase them soon, not necessarily taking them into into, uh, our possession, but purchasing them soon. And the total cost per unit was eleven thousand dollars for those, looking for two of them for a total cost of twenty two thousand dollars. The next closest bid, uh, for two units was, uh, over two thousand dollars higher, uh, total bid. Uh, Blair's government we've worked with, uh, also recently. And they came in over six thousand dollars a unit higher, so. Uh, we're happy with machines. We had, uh, committee work on machine specs that were sent out. Track lanes, all all the things that I don't know about. And, uh, they're very satisfied and happy with the machines selected by Devils Lake Marine. It is a speedo dealer, and so I'm requesting the commission approve the purchase of two snowmobiles for eleven thousand dollars each, and it is in our budget. So I'm not requesting that.
That's the key for me to three seconds.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Ruston, thank you by Mr. Ross. Any discussion? Do we know all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You should have let him, it wasn't my budget. All right, thanks.
Pass.
Perfect. Um, besides that, I hope you all have a very safe, meaningful part of your life.
All right, how about this attorney who loved it, what did he think today?
Mister Chair members of the board, yes, and we haven't made them, you'll have to bear with me because I just think this. After our meetings start this afternoon, um, but I received a notification from the attorneys representing the county in the opioid litigation. That they have identified another potential defendant that has a lot of shares in Grand Forks. Uh, so the reason I bring this up before investigating this further is that their, um, notice provides a deadline of July. And yeah, that we have to get back to them when the response on. So, um, I will share with you what I what I know right now from reviewing this, and if. If you want more time to think about it. We like, we would have to schedule a special meeting prior to that July ninth date. Um, but from what I know, it looks like they have identified two additional defendants in Diviore and Midland. Both are identified as a manufacturer distributor or distributor in, uh, the opioid market. Um, each of them have a market share, uh, over five percent. Um, some items that, uh. The attorneys for the county have identified in this notice for us is that, um, if we elect to, um. Join. That in a. Additional litigation with these new identified defendants, we need to be, uh, aware that the. Court handling this multi district litigation has indicated that, uh. Any entity that's selected as a bellwether jurisdiction, in other words, kind of a sample. Case to go first, um, must be willing and able to litigate if selected. And, uh, basically that means, um, participate in discovery, depositions, potential in person appearances, and if. Uh, the entities selected as a bellwether choose not to participate, the court would. Um, seek to either dismiss or, uh, issue sanctions against, uh, any counsel or plaintiff that didn't. Willingly participate if selected as a bellwether. Um, also, they caution that the, similar to the other, um. Defendants that we have pursued, the amount and timing of a potential recovery is unknown at this time. So, um, it all kind of depends on how the discovery process evolves and and, uh, how the case goes. They're not able to give us. Uh, a good estimation as to what approximation of recovery or or. Uh, settlement we might, we might get with either these parties, so that's an uncertain item as well. One thing I would note is that normally, um, our council would, uh. Include a recommendation like that they recommend we join or not join, uh, their notice in in this. Does not have a recommendation for how they would be should proceed. Um. So that's kind of all the information I know now. If you'd like additional information, we certainly can table this and I can get in touch with our council. Or if you'd like to just make a decision to pay, that's fine, and I can let them know the board's decisions.
These are the same lawyers we've been using all the way along. I'm surprised they wouldn't have made a recommendation to you, that's good to see. Questions, comments? You know, just think we should go go for it. What? Think we should go for it? Well, the the thing here is that still, we are not paying any costs, we are not paying any fees. Uh, it's all a contingency, contingency basis. So doesn't strike me that there's any particular risk to us. Unless you see something that.
Unless we're selected as a bellwether and then.
As far as the jurisdiction to try the case in North Dakota?
Well, it's it's a MBL, a multi district litigation, so it will be tried in Ohio.
Yeah.
So if we're selected as a bellwether case, we may have to participate in. Uh, you know, testify or or what in Ohio. Presumably.
We're not likely to be considered as a major player in this thing.
Correct.
Uh, but.
I would make a motion, we proceed.
All right, have a motion in a second. Any discussion, Mr. Hagan?
No.
Right. Uh, hearing no, no questions, um, all in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Pass.
Thank you.
I don't think we learn much more by having a special meeting. Okay, anything else? That's it, okay. Um. The committee reports today, Commissioner Hagan, start with you.
Yeah, I have, um, just an update from the library. I don't know if anybody's been following along, but there's been a few, um. Folks that have brought some reconsideration for some books at the library. They are requesting that the, these books are. They're saying that these books are inappropriate for children, um. I won't say if I agree or not, but I, um. Offered my services to review these books with the president of our board, Brad, um. We're gonna review the materials and then some supporting documents to see if these books should be moved or not. The reason we got here is that. They presented to Wendy that they want these books moved, um. They did not agree with Wendy's request, saying no, that they're not gonna be moved, and so now they're coming back and asking the board to. Go over Wendy and have that moved, so. It is in the process of moving forward, but. That's just a little update from exciting world at the library.
All right, anything else? That's it, okay. Good luck with that. Mr. Ross?
Um. Yes, the, uh, it's instruction at the jail, we did not have a meeting today, uh, most of those. Guys are on their Fourth of July holiday or whatever, so, um. What else did we have there? Oh, the, uh, the jail, we've been working on finding a home for the sheriffs. We've had two meetings on that, so. Other than that, that's it.
Mr. Ross did.
And then P O, a couple weeks ago, um. Maybe it was last week, I forget, my days are awful, I think. Uh, we're doing process studies south of town and, uh. I brought the, uh, airport intersection of their catchings, so they're gonna hold that in the focus. That's about it.
Yeah, Mr. Peach?
I have nothing to report.
And I have nothing, except I think we were in budget ratings and I can't think of what else we were doing for the last couple of weeks, so. That was. That's all we have for that. Now we've got, uh. unfinished, I mean, this reclassification, uh, request in the recorder's office. Right?
Mister Chairman, from the commission, this request that the county recorder brought to you at the budget meeting. And she would like the position reclassified effective July one, uh, from a grade. Eight to grade ten, and the, uh, job description is.
I would make that whole thing.
Second.
By Mr. Ross, second by Mr. Peach, um. Is there any discussion? We've all had the opportunity to look at her for reasons for reclassification, that seems to make sense to me, but. Uh, Deborah, you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, then, uh. All in favor of the motions, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? Yeah. So that one is finished, then, uh, the the. Price increase is simply informational?
That's right.
Will they?
We're checking a thirty eight percent increase effective July one, we did get the bill of thirty four percent.
Now, that's a thirty eight percent from last year.
Yep.
Any particular reason?
Well, it says in the state. What they state their letter.
Okay. All right, well, we usually have to have, so then, what we could do. And, uh, the next. Uh. Item is the election results, so study those at your leader. Every phrase in the whole topic, so, uh, congratulations to you and your department for. Everybody has, it has worked on it, it's just a major thing, and then and you get to do it again.
Yeah.
Really soon.
Yes, we had two recounts.
What?
We had two recounts, I suspect.
Oh, yeah, but tell me how many votes you had to recount.
One of them had four votes.
Yep.
And the other one was sixty nine.
So they weren't too taxing for you, Bart.
Yeah.
I hope it's a easy and nice time, bro. All right, um. Mr. Hagan?
Thank you. My, it's my moment. Uh, motion to adjourn, please.
Yeah, motion passed. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.